Be here.
You ready to go? Everything's on? All right. All right, well, welcome everybody to the October 28th meeting of the Hancock County Area Plan Commission. I'd like to go ahead and officially call the meeting to order. We'll ask you all to please turn off any cell phones, electronic devices, any other noisemakers you might have with you. First order of business this evening will be the adoption of our previous meeting minutes, previous month's meeting minutes that were submitted electronically.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved in second to approve last month's meeting minutes submitted electronically. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
I want to abstain since I was not there.
Right. All right, we have all but two members tonight. Mr. Woolridge is absent, Mr. McDaniel is absent. And then this evening, we'd like to welcome back, I guess, Mr. Derek Toll. Everybody says your name three different ways, so Derek Toll. Derek spent some time with the Plan Commission many years ago and has rounded out our board now for this next term. Moving forward, I'd like to advise you all that your testimony is being recorded, it's taken under oath. We'll request that anyone that wishes to speak will only do so when called upon. You will come up and face the attorney to my left and be sworn in before speaking. Everybody speaking will be asked to give their full name for the record, spell your last name for our meeting minutes to be fully accurate. And please speak directly into the microphone when you're doing that, it's a little touchy. Kayla will be giving her staff report. After that, we will bring the petitioner for a 10-minute maximum presentation. That's then followed by a collective 10 minutes for all of our remonstrators. We then offer five minutes for any government officials and then round it out with five minutes for the petitioner's rebuttal. Our attorney gives two-minute and one-minute warnings. I will ask that everybody conduct themselves in a civil manner, and if you can't do that, we reserve the right to ask you to leave. This meeting, for your information, is being recorded and streamed for public viewing. By participating, you acknowledge that your image, voice, and comments may be captured and made publicly available. This meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with Indiana Code 514-1.5. And with that, we will move straight to our first agenda item, Hancock Regional Hospital PUD.
All right, just going to be giving a quick introduction of tonight's petition for the Hancock Regional Hospital PUD final detailed plan for the expansion of an emergency room addition. Also, it includes a replat as part of that emergency room addition.
This screen's not working here.
Okay, I will turn that back. For this evening's, for this petition, it should be noted that a vote is not required of the Plan Commission. This is more or less an informational presentation for the Plan Commission and the general public. The approval at this point is all administrative, both the replat and the approval of the final detailed plan to make sure it is in compliance with that PUD, technically speaking. It has been to the technical committee, so that is why this is going to be informational. The plat will be recorded before any building permit is issued after all technical comments relating to it have been addressed. And then when a building permit is applied for, final administrative review will occur by all necessary departments, once again, making sure that all technical comments regarding the site plan are addressed. I have included the technical comments in the staff report for anybody who is interested. They are technical. And at that point, I will go ahead and turn it over to Harold Gibson and Matt Browning of Hancock Regional. Do you have any questions for me?
Good evening.
Swear or affirm, under the penalty of perjury, that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole group and nothing but?
I do.
State your name and spell your last name for the...
Sure, Matt Browning, B-R-O-W-N-I-N-G. Okay, so, good evening, Commissioners. Matt Browning, brand-new with Hancock Health. I'm coming out of my third month at this facility, so I've successfully found where, like, the bathroom is and some conference rooms at this point, but it's a pleasure to meet all of you. I am the new Chief Administrative Officer, and I'm here to give you a quick overview, at least programmatically, about what we're trying to do with this new ER expansion. And then I'll have my colleague Harold Gibson come up, speak a little bit more about some of the technical requirements. So, as you may, are likely aware, the continued growth on the western side of Hancock County is really driving the need for healthcare services. We see nearly a 21% increase in the amount of demand for emergency room services in the last five years. Certainly, a lot of that came through COVID, but also because it's an incredibly fast-growing area. If you, what we know from looking at a lot of the migratory data right now is that one in three Hancock County residents actually leaves the county for ER services. They either come to, they either traverse up to Community North, they go to Saxony, Ascension Fishers, or they come to us in Greenfield if they stay locally. We certainly are, being the county provider, want to make sure that we are doing all we can to increase patient access, and doing so would require us the opportunity to grow an emergency room addition here at the Gateway Facility off of Mount Comfort Road. Couple of other things we're very excited about what this will allow us to do. Obviously, number one, continue to grow use of that campus. The other thing, having it in such a prominent location allows us to be more nimble, more responsive in the need of emergency preparedness, working with our local fire and other type of emergency responders, should there be situations out on I-70. This just gives us another opportunity to be able to intervene, provide care if needed as quickly as possible. We're still, we were still working on the operations of what this building may look like in terms of the number of actual ER beds we'll have and whatnot, so I don't have any firm figures for you right now, but as you know, tonight's more about a technical plat application. So, with that, I'm going to step aside and let Harold come up and talk over some of the overall technical requirements for the site. Thank you.
Swear or affirm, under the penalty of perjury, that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole group and nothing but?
I do. Thank you. Harold Gibson, G-I-B-S-O-N, Director of Property Development with Hancock Health. Appreciate Matt doing the ER overview for me. That's his lane much more than mine. And I'm excited, though, and pleased to be here this evening. It's been a while since I've been in front of you. It's always a pleasure to... Mission, but tonight, excited to be part of the growth that's in the Mount Comfort Corridor. You know, in 2020, we opened the Gateway Clinic, and before that, we were here, presented the planned unit development that only a couple of faces I recognized as maybe being part of that process, but this is the Planned Unit Development Ordinance that we govern the Gateway Park by. And since 2020, we've presented many commercial projects to you, retail projects and residential projects to you, but this is the first time that we've been able to share with you anything that's located in our 25-acre medical campus that was part of the land use plan. That is intended to be the anchor for Hancock Gateway Park. So, we're excited that we get to continue the medical campus that we master-planned, and at the time, it contained an illustration of, and those of you that were involved in that process will recall it, contained an illustration of several buildings that were within that 25-acre campus. And as you might expect, as we've come to learn, as the planned unit development, if there's anything, one thing for sure, is that it's going to change. And since that time, we've had lots of things affect that, COVID being the number-one thing. We've had other growth north and south of us, and we've also learned that the medical industry is changing and evolving, and one of the things that we are finding now is we don't put lots of buildings on a campus, we put it in one. So, our plan now, we have a conceptual plan that we've been working on that has several phases to it, but ultimately, it would become a home for, as you've heard us say before, a second hospital, have medical offices there, and always part of that has been the emergency room. And the emergency clinic is now the next phase that we're ready to embark on, it being part of the planned unit development, the permitted use lies within that medical campus, obviously, so that's a permitted use. The intention here tonight, as Kayla said, is to inform the Planning Commission of what we're doing, and certainly, we're always excited to promote the ideas and the vision that we have for the Gateway Park in the Mount Comfort area, but this is just the first step of many before we are able to really start on the construction, which we hope happens in 2026. But as Matt said, we have a design of the building, it'll be approximately 16,000 square feet. That'll probably change before we get to the final design. We're going through programming. One of the things that we will be doing is bringing the immediate care that's at the Gateway Clinic now into this space, so we'll have both the emergency room and the immediate care entrance the same in one patient entrance, and then we'll have an ambulance entrance as well. This will all, as you can see on the slide, goes on the northwest side of the, is your screen not working there?
Ours isn't, no.
I apologize.
Well, it's not your fault.
All right, well, I had a presentation, but I was too late getting it on a PowerPoint, but it may be in the packet. So, we're excited about that. We at one time thought the emergency room would go to the south when we were thinking about would the hospital be north or would the hospital be south? So, with this plan, the Gateway Clinic building was always designed to add on to, so we'll be adding on to the north side of the building, and eventually, the medical office space and the hospital will go to the south, and it'll be one large building with a tower and a beautiful building. I think you might have seen that rendering at some time in the past, but all will fit on the 25-acre campus. The site itself, since we're going to the north of the building, we will have to relocate some utilities because we thought we would be going to the south with this, so there'll be some drainage easements that we'll have to go to the drainage board and talk about, vacating and relocating. There'll be some sanitary sewer and some water lines that we'll have to move that otherwise would be under the building, so we all have, we have that all planned out. We will have to go to the Commissioners to ask for some easement vacations on some other communication lines and some things of that nature. So, this is just the first step of many. We're excited to introduce that to you and certainly here to answer any questions that you might have. As how it affects the rest of the development, we will be extending the road to the northwest. John Modul will be extending it to the west and ending it or terminating it temporarily with a traffic circle, which will help people get in and out of the ER and also lead, which I think is most important, lead to future development and expansion in our hospitality loop to the north and to the west behind Starbucks and then over towards the convention center and the hotel. And if you haven't been out there recently, the hotel construction is coming along finally, it's coming out of the ground, they're building the elevator shaft, I think they're up to, like, the fourth floor on construction of that, so people are starting to notice, hey, what's going on there? So, it's exciting to see that. It's been a long time getting out of the ground. I'm sure they're not happy with the delays, but we're excited to see that. So, any questions you have of us technically, I know we've been working with the fire department to make sure that they can get in and out.
Two minutes.
I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. Chief Welch works very, very close with us, and we're excited that he's involved and takes a very proactive approach early on, and that's worked out well. So, any other questions you have for me?
So, you're planning on an emergency room, but you're going to keep the immediate care?
Yes, we're just going to move it from the clinic now, and it'll share the same space in that 16,000 square feet, so you'll go in the same entrance, and then once you get inside the entrance, you'll be able to go to either the ER or the immediate care. And that seems to be a very popular trend now. Obviously, immediate care is much less expensive than ER, and some folks come to the ER that only need immediate care, so they'll have a choice to make, and it'll be a first-class facility.
They really do a good job of that, you know? Somebody gets banged up at sports, they run them over there, they do an X-ray right away.
Right.
And the costs are usually lower.
They are.
The X-rays and stuff than if you went anywhere else, so that's part of that 21% is...
Yeah.
The price is good.
Well, I can brag a little bit on our staff. I get to be involved in our staff out there every day, and those folks really, really do care, and I get lots of compliments. So, if you haven't been to Gateway, I applaud you for not having to go there, but if you get to go there, I think you will be treated well, so.
I'm just going to make sure I'm getting acclimated correctly. So, the current front of where the immediate care is, that is what faces 70, so this is, this proposed piece is on the backside of that?
It just really kind of adds on to the west. You know, the building sits at a little bit of an angle, so technically, if I'm doing directions, it would be the northwest side, so if you just view that building and just take it and extend it west towards the pond...
Okay.
What we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, when you get all settled in, is there any plan to put some signs towards the interstate? A lot of people ask a lot of questions and wonder, what's that building? What's that building?
Yeah, we do have, you know, we've been very careful about that, not to become a commercial advertising row of signs. As you know, we got rid of the billboards. Hopefully, everybody notices that.
I'm thinking of advertising, just thinking of just, people know...
There is.
Where it's at.
Yeah, I didn't get right to your answer, but the, yes, we have plans for a separate sign that would be Gateway Clinic, Immediate Care, Emergency, that would be a second sign, not the size of the ones that's out there now by the interstate, but one that would be, like, due north of where the entrance, where the clinic is, and it would just focus on us, so yes, the signage will be better, so.
Sounds good.
We get, we've been cautioned from day one, Mr. Holton, about that because we have to be careful not to advertise anything that would reflect a hospital because we're not a hospital yet. So, the marketing folks are very careful to point out to us, we have to be careful how we do that sign, so, but we will be helping with that and adding a bigger sign on the building.
Thank you.
So, could you, now, I'm just curious, can you define what a hospital designation is and why, what's missing, people to entitle that? I mean, does it have to have, you know, operating rooms, does it have to have what? I mean, if you can't say it's a hospital, why, what keeps it from that? I'm just sort of...
Maybe I should let Matt answer that question.
Okay, sorry, I'm just a little curious about...
I just follow, I just follow orders on that, so, okay, yes.
No, it's a great question, like, what exactly is a hospital? So, a lot of times, what we look at is determined, what do we have to offer 24/7, okay? So, when you offer an ED, obviously, that's something that's available 24/7. In Indiana, hospital licensure also requires a minimum number of inpatient beds for it to be considered a full hospital. Ironically, there is not an OR or a surgical component to it, although that does make a lot of sense if you're rounding out a well-thought-out plan for an entire organization. So, so, long story short, ER services are minimum. Usually, if we want to call and put it on a hospital license, it has to have inpatient beds as well, so, which we're not at that point, but that is certainly something that we have looked down the road to pursue. Does that help?
Yeah, that, perfect, sorry.
That's why I brought him along.
Do you have a proposed schedule for this project?
We do not yet, other than we'd like to break ground in 2026, so, takes a long time for programming, longer than I ever expected when I got into the hospital world, you know? So, my hat in my world is, let's get it approved, let's get it going, and we're working on those right now. So, we have, Mr. Hahn is here with us, Dave's the director of that process, and our architects and all of our staff meet, there's a lot of people have to have a, have to have input on it, so.
Yeah, I've just been, the reason I ask is just, you know, this PUD's been very well-managed, and it's been going very well. I just think it's been interesting that we can't seem to get the pace of construction and planning to work with the pace of how healthcare's changing and keep on melding together, but this has done a good job of that, I think, but that was the basis of the question, was just where this was all going to fit in, so it didn't change before you got it built again.
Well, interesting enough, Mr. Long, they, you know, we built that building to add on to, and we built it under the rules, and this is, I'm in Dave's space now, but we built it, and the architect designed it so that it would be easy to add on to, and we started these discussions with him probably a year ago, and those rules are not the same now. So, our ability to hook on is not like it was in 2020, so...
Right.
And it just adds cost.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So, any other questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you, and we appreciate the time this evening, and certainly, the cooperation from the county continues to be marvelous, and we, we're happy for that. Thank you.
Okay. Since this is informational, we'll take, we can take our remonstration period if anybody has comments, questions, would like to speak? None? You guys want another two minutes? Good? All good? All right. No action from us, other than just nod our heads and move on and say thank you, I think, right? And good luck with the, with the plat committee and all the folks you get to see next. Yeah, thanks for coming out, appreciate it. Okay. Item number two is the I-3 and the Hancock County Plan Commission Board of Commissioners rezone of three parcels.
Turn those off. Turn those off.
For all of them on now.
No.
So, don't worry about it.
It's fine.
Okay, sorry.
It's all right.
And we use that one even more. See that one over there? I can see that one there.
So, I-3 rezone. You remember, this was a rezone from AG to IBP back in 2022. The area outlined in red is what we're discussing this evening. It is located at approximately 2811 to 2765, north 500 west in Buck Creek Township. This is a dead-end stretch of 500 west. If you know where Louder Cemetery is, along 300 north. If you were to go south right there, that's 500 west. This is also adjacent to I-70. As you can see, it's in an area that is shown in our comprehensive plan as largely industrial, and it has developed as such over the past several years. However, there was a commitment in the rezone of this particular piece of property that I would like to touch on now. It was that, sorry, let me grab my actual... There were three commitments. I think I'm saying this right. These were copied in two rezone ordinances that rezoned this area in two phases. So, first, there were use required, there were uses that were not permitted, such as parking lot structure as primary use, outdoor boat RV storage, lumberyard, and mini warehouse self-storage. Those stayed with the ordinance, with the, as a commitment. Secondly, the Plan Commission was able to review a development plan prior to any issuance of permits, and this was to be performed in conjunction with the technical committee. Third, county approval of an economic development agreement and tax abatement approved from the county council related to the subject properties. If this condition is not satisfied on or before May 2023, May 1st, 2023, then the zoning of the subject property shall revert back to agricultural. So, a tax abatement and a economic development agreement were passed. There was also a commitment to put a roundabout in up at 500 west and 300 north, cul-de-sac and some other sort of commitments related to this project. However, none of that occurred, no development plan was ever filed, and the EDA has since expired. While the way this ordinance is, and this is ordinance 2022-9C, and I think the other one is 9D. While this ordinance says that the property shall revert back to agricultural if the economic development agreement was not passed, which seems to signal sort of an automatic rezone to agricultural, since there was this agreement passed by the RDC and the county council, the safest way to have a rezone occur that seemed to be in spirit with the rezone ordinance back in 2022 was to run this rezone back through the public hearing process, which is what we're doing tonight. A neighbor in the neighborhood along 300 north actually brought this to my attention and said, hey, isn't this expired? Didn't they promise to rezone that back to AG? And that's why we're here tonight. The Commissioners have given me a kind of a thumbs up to run this through and see where we land, and that is, that's how we got here. So, because this EDA has expired and nothing has happened out here, the development plan on which this was rezoned never occurred. The plan appears infeasible, basically, and part of the reason we require these plans and commitments back when, in 2022, when I-3 brought a plan before this board asking for a favorable recommendation to go to the BOC, which ultimately, it did get rezoned to IBP with these commitments, it hasn't acted on them in a timely manner. And that's why, at this point, we are considering this as a, an opportunity for rezone back to agricultural, not agriculture, not automatically, but rather through the public hearing process, to give anybody who has any thoughts on this issue an opportunity to come and speak. The owner of the property, I-3, I'm sorry, that's probably not the technical name, Mount Comfort Realty something or other. with specific development plans. Given that the plans I-3 presented have not occurred at this time, going back to the drawing board, or in other words, the agricultural zoning district, is the responsible thing to do, based on our comprehensive plan. It is possible that another project may come along in the future that will require another change of the zoning map and different zoning commitments. Another public hearing will be held if and when another rezone is pursued. Typically, when we look at rezones, we take this, these five criteria into account. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Is it consistent with current conditions and character of the area? Is it consistent with the most desirable use of the land with property values? And is it consistent with responsible growth and development? This is a mixed bag, considering that we are reverting it back to agricultural zoning. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan and that the specific development plan that it was originally rezoned based on has not occurred. It is placing this back in a less, a low-intensity zoning district that, like we said, most likely we will see this back here again someday with another project, another development plan. And at that point, the Plan Commission and the Board of Commissioners will be able to make a decision based on that project. Because of the failure of I-3 to make progress toward commencing this project, zoning should be returned to agricultural zoning until such a time that a more feasible project is proposed. The Plan Commission, my recommendation is staff, is that the Plan Commission make a favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to rezone I-3 property from industrial business park to agriculture. All right, that's all I've got. Do you guys have any questions on that?
I have just a few. Are there any existing violations that, that we haven't heard about thus far?
There were some complaints along this area.
Right.
So that was another, another thing that brought this area to our attention. There were two house lots that were part of this rezone in that north area of the area outlined in red. The houses were not demolished when I-3 took ownership and instead sat empty and vacant, were vandalized, people were dumping there, and then ultimately, there was a really unfortunate public safety call out there where there was a deceased person involved. After a lot of, this was brought up to the county commissioners, there was luckily an opportunity for the fire department to use the houses for training, to, as, burn properties, basically. That's my understanding, anyway. Probably not phrasing it correctly. But that's how those properties were finally demolished and put in their current state.
I think the economic development agreement was well drafted, that there had to be some delivery of some type to take advantage of those benefits, financial benefits, as well as the abatements. But is there anything on the books that was remitted under the EDA, or just kind of sat there?
I believe there's been some payment of engineering fees for the roundabout, but that's the extent of my knowledge as to what's happened.
Got it. And, and the expiration is tied to the original date or the amended date?
The amended date, I believe.
In your communications, were there any, the phone tag, any protest about this proceeding? Any requests to extend, anything that you heard?
No protests. We did make sure that the, the owner was included in the public notices that were sent out.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, we're only dealing with the three parcels on the east side of the road, correct? The parcel to the west is not under consideration.
That's correct. The commitment that mentions that we're zoning going back to Ag is only tied to these three parcels, which is only part of the I-3 project, but it's what we have to work with.
Okay. All right. Any more questions, Kayla? No? All right, thank you. Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this project? None? I'm sorry?
In opposition to?
In opposition to the rezone. It's a proposed rezone to agriculture. So it would be in opposition to the proposed rezone. Okay. All right, C and none. Then we would move to any public officials that would like to speak. All right, none of those.
We do have interest, sometimes we take on to remonstrance those who would like to say anything about the, if volunteered, but I'll leave it up to you, Mr. President.
Yeah. Are you guys okay with that? Taking some remonstrance time to let anybody make public comment?
Support of it?
Just public comment?
Be.
Support and support or opposition?
I don't know why we would just take open.
Okay. Well, it's going to be any supporter in opposition, one of the two. So, all right, we'll, we'll use our remonstrance time for that. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? Okay, come on up.
Hi, thank you.
Do you swear a firm end of the testimony at the testimony you're about to give us the truth all?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Leah Lederman, L-E-D-E-R-M-A-N, and thank you for this chance to speak. I just wanted to add a few quick things about rezoning this, about I-3, and some complaints about Buck Creek zoning in general. And I'll just start. I'm a former resident of 500 west. I-3 came in and said, sell your house at land value only, or we'll just build next door, which was an unconscionable choice. But I'm not here because I have an axe to grind. I sincerely hope that I-3 can be a cautionary tale. They violated their EDA on multiple counts before it ever expired. The EDA mandated upkeep of the property. If you guys want, I can give you the specific sections, like section three, I, I, yeah. Anyway, they boarded up the houses, as Ms. Brooks said, they left. They didn't mow the lawns, which sounds like I'm complaining about dandelions, but that did violate a weed board ordinance, which violated the EDA section about compliance with the laws. And more than that, because the weed board had to dedicate so much time and equipment use to dealing with these lawns, the county council in May 2024 gave the weed board $5,000 to help out with that. And when the weed board didn't do it, the Buck Creek Fire Station did. I-3 did not. And yeah, the, the properties being left derelict, attracted vagrants that we talked about. It took a full year after the deceased person was found, and nearly two years after signing the EDA, before I-3 ever tore down those structures. And that was only after neighbors directly complained to the county about what was going on there. It was just one of the houses that was burned down in a, in a fire training exercise. But, and I'm glad that they received that exercise and that practice. But again, it just seemed like I-3 used county resources to skirt costs. And also, oh, in the spring of this year, when I-3 burned all those down, that was August of last year, and when they tore the other ones down. As of the spring of this year, when the commissioners told I-3 to fill in those foundations, because they just left them gaping holes in the ground, they were told to fill those in, in the spring, and they have not yet done so. So this is a problematic developer. They should not be in Hancock County. As far as this particular parcel going back to Ag, I think it's the right thing to do. I know this area was slated for industry, but the plans set forth 20 years ago, I think, have shown themselves to not be entirely sustainable, as that area is saturated with industry squashed up against, I think it's the fastest-growing residential area in the county, and then there are schools in between. That's with the spec buildings not yet even occupied. So, and as I just learned, the 21% increase in calls to the ER because of the rapid growth there, that's obviously consistent with an increase in EMS calls, which also is burdening the already overburdened and understaffed Buck Creek Fire Station, which was just told by county council that there's no money for them. There's no money for them. The EDA money that's supposed to be coming down isn't. There are developers who aren't paying. The EDA money is not coming out to the amounts that it's supposed to be coming out to, and it's not going to Buck Creek, which falls within 85% of the TIP district. So there are some major inconsistencies with this. And if it was slated for industry, it's not being treated as though, you know, 20 years ago, they were planning for this, but the plans are not going well for the people who are there and for their safety. Last thing I would just like to say, I'm not against all development, but I don't want what happened with I-3 to happen again. There's been a tide change in Hancock County. I appreciate Ms. Brooks and the Plan Commission and other government officials have been listening to residents, voting down potentially harmful projects. We have the benefit of hindsight here, learning from projects like I-3 and other developers who are not making good on their promises and signed contracts with the county. But now, more than ever, as we're heading into much larger development with higher stakes and larger repercussions, I'm talking data centers and power plants, we really, really need our appointed and elected officials to protect residents' interests, safety, and quality of life. Moving forward, I hope that we don't just grant approvals, but enter partnerships, that we can be home to companies that will protect green space, offer community centers and parks, entertainment, sponsor community grants, and maybe, just maybe one of them will put a mural on one of their buildings.
All right, thank you. Any time left?
Yes.
Five minutes or so? Anyone? No? All right. Do we have anything that you want on behalf of the Board of Commissioners or whoever you're representing, like to speak on this? So we're basically, the Planning Commission can initiate a rezone. So that's what we're doing this evening at the request of the Board of Commissioners. So we would be, we would be looking at offering a recommendation to the commissioners to then backdoor our way back into the normal process here.
Yes, more or less, that's correct.
Yeah. So that's what we'd be looking for, a favorable, non-favorable, no recommendation, or we could continue. And then, of course, we can do, you know, standard conditions, uses, things like that, which, you know, we wouldn't want to probably change many Ag uses, I guess, but all of our normal things.
Motion for favorable recommendation of the rezone of three parcels from IBP to agricultural due to non-compliance of commitments.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to offer a favorable recommendation for the rezone of the three parcels to agriculture. So Dawn, when you're ready, you can call the roll on this one.
Mr. Toll?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Will?
Yes.
All right. Thank, thank you, Kayla, for that presentation. We'll move on to item number three, which is Core Consulting, an appeal of Plan Director Decision Criteria.
Everybody had a chance to familiarize themselves with this packet?
Yes.
We need to. I can give you a couple more minutes to...
Yeah, you're good? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. All right. So this is a little different. Chris Cooper of Core Consulting dropped off a minor subdivision plat application, like he typically does in my department, a month or two ago now. And I've been taking some time to review a lot of these, to make sure we're getting the big picture before they hit our agenda. And one thing that stuck out to me on this particular three-lot minor subdivision proposal was that there was already a Lot One of a Robinson Minor subdivision, which, in my mind, I thought, well, that seems to mean that this was already then Lot One, and then the remainder is Lot Two. So I definitely looked at, looked at this and told Chris, I need some more time to look at this and review it. Upon further review, I saw that there was a, an additional subdivision in Abbey Anderson, one-lot minor further north, along County Road 50 West. This whole area is still zoned Ag. Major subdivisions are not allowed. And the fact that there was a Lot One, the Robinson Minor, a Lot Two, the, basically a Lot Two, meaning another lot, another single lot minor subdivision to the north with that Abbey Anderson out of the same parent parcel, seemed to, my interpretation, then to leave the remainder, which was a larger parcel of farmland, as the remainder. So Lot Three. I've given a description of this in my letter to Chris, which you guys have a copy of in your document. But for those reasons, because it appeared that there had already been three lots taken out of the parent parcel or the original tract since January 1 of 2002, I made the decision not to file this as a minor subdivision. There's also a survey by H. Gibson of the, that broke the property into 10-plus acre parcels in 2020, which, as you guys know, that's exempt from the plating provisions. That created a 13-acre tract that is shown on this proposed subdivision that the three lots are being created from. Okay, so I'm going to just quickly read the definition of a minor subdivision, just for the benefit of everybody here.
Okay. All right. So, this is a little different. Chris Cooper of Core Consulting dropped off a minor subdivision plat application, like he typically does in my department, a month or two ago now. And I've been taking some time to review a lot of these, to make sure we're getting the big picture before they hit our agenda. And one thing that stuck out to me on this particular three-lot minor subdivision proposal was that there was already a Lot One of a Robinson Minor Subdivision, which, in my mind, I thought, well, that seems to mean that this was already then Lot One, and then the remainder is Lot Two. So, I definitely looked at, looked at this and told Chris, I need some more time to look at this and review it. Upon further review, I saw that there was a, an additional subdivision in Abbey Anderson, one-lot miner, further north, along County Road 50 West. This whole area is still zoned ag. Major subdivisions are not allowed. And the fact that there was a Lot One, the Robinson Minor, a Lot Two, the, basically a Lot Two, meaning another lot, another single lot minor subdivision to the north with that Abbey Anderson out of the same parent parcel, seemed to my interpretation then to leave the remainder, which was a larger parcel of farmland, as the remainder, so Lot Three. I've given a description of this in my letter to Chris, which you guys have a copy of in your document. But for those reasons, because it appeared that there had already been three lots taken out of the parent parcel or the original tract since January 1st of 2002, I made the decision not to file this as a minor subdivision. There's also a survey by H. Gibson of the, that broke the property into 10-plus acre parcels in 2020, which, as you guys know, that's exempt from the plating provisions. That created a 13-acre tract that is shown on this proposed subdivision that the three lots are being created from. Okay, so, I'm gonna just quickly read the definition of a minor subdivision, just for the benefit of everybody here. Minor subdivision is defined by the Hancock County Subdivision Control Ordinance as the division of a single lot, tract, or parcel of land, or part thereof, into not more than three lots, tracts, or parcels of land, including the remainder of the original tract, any one of which is less than 10 acres, for the purpose, whether immediate or future, of transfer of ownership or construction of residential, commercial, or industrial purposes. That's kind of where we're at. I did note that a division of land pursuant to the allocation of land in the settlement of a decedent's estate or a court decree for the distribution of property is considered an exempt division as well, in addition to that 10-acre split, 10-acre plus splits. So, please feel free to take the time to read through the rest of my letter to Chris Cooper. I'm happy to explain any more of it to you guys on why I chose to not file this as a minor subdivision, but simply put, the remainder being 10-plus acres does not count as the original, an original tract. That was probably the trickiest part that Rhonda and I went back and forth on. It was interpretation within our office to use January 1st, 2002, as that date. The other alternative date that we have to use is when our subdivision control ordinance was passed, which was 1993. So, that does not benefit residents wanting to split their land.
So, the option here would be to go to a major subdivision to create this project?
Yes. That would be the, the alternative, alternative option would be to rezone to something other than ag, like R1, and then to pursue a major subdivision.
You also outlined some options to sell or purchase, and it's probably some exemptions for some estate-related activity.
Yes. Another option that I outlined in the letter is that this parcel at its current size, which is 13 acres, there is an option to just sell it as a building lot. And considering it as more than 10 acres, it's exempt from plating, it's still buildable.
It was, yeah, the settlement of an estate. Where did, where did we land on that with this decision? A division of land pursuant to an allocation of land in settlement of a decedent's estate or a court decree for the distribution is considered an exempt division.
So, back in 2020, when Mrs. Stevens divided the estate for, the land for estate planning purposes into parcels one through six, which you can see in your packet as well, there's a original survey of this land. You can see how the parcels were broken up. Most of them are 10-plus acres, which would have made them exempt from plating regardless. Parcel two, we would have probably called a Commissioner's Rule, because it has a house lot on it. So, we're used to seeing that. I did not count that toward the max number of splits because of that estate rule. And then parcels five and six, and also the subdivision shown in the corner of that second page of the survey, being across a public right-of-way, I also chose not to count those toward the number of splits in this situation.
You guys have any questions? I'm gonna take a minute to peruse your documents before we call the, I guess, the petitioner, right?
Yes.
So, we're doing an appeal. I don't know, we've done an appeal of a decision before, so this would be the, he, he would be the petitioner, and then we could have remonstrance after that, I suppose, right?
I'm gonna read a quick section out of the code.
Okay.
So, this is what I, what I told Chris in the end of the letter. So, in our subdivision control ordinance, there's a Section 155.124, Appeal. Any person feeling aggrieved at the action of the commission or commission staff, or lack of action of the commission or commission staff, may apply in writing to the commission prior to the next regular meeting for modification of action complained of, or lack of action, on the proposed plat or replat. The application shall be considered by the commission at a time and in a manner as it may determine, but within 90 days following the regular meeting. So, you, as the Plan Commission, can choose, basically, what happens with this plat. Does it remain unfilled as a minor subdivision, needs to rezone and be a major subdivision? You could say, no, go ahead and accept it as a minor subdivision, take it through the normal channels, or you could continue it and take up to 90 days following this meeting to consider. Rhonda, does that sound?
Just keep in mind, too, that we've made changes in our rules recently about division of subdivision, making subdivision that are for minor subs in order to circumvent the major subdivision process. We just made, changed some of our rule process about that. So, we, we have kind of doubled down on that policy.
Is that policy considered in the, in what we have here, but that predated? Or would that be applicable here at all?
Our policy was to strengthen what we already thought was the rule, and then we had some people that were kind of going around it, and that's why we tried to make it crystal clear.
And the packet that we have in front of us occurred concurrent with the crystal clearing up?
Say that again?
When was the, when we made, we made it crystal clear? What was the date?
July, I believe.
July. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess to that point, though, I don't, I don't know that this was a project trying to do what the others were trying to do with the minors necessarily, but that, I think her point was that we were trying to strengthen the process and the policy of a minor subdivision, right? That's why it's getting some additional attention, so. Okay. Mr. Cooper, are you here? Come on up.
I swear affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Chris Cooper, C-O-O-P-E-R, with Core Consulting. I prepared something here, kind of the exhibits that were hopefully distributed to you, just kind of to step through them to give the short history of the property. I'll start as background. The parcel we're concerned with tonight was created in 2020 as a part of estate planning matter, rather than for development purposes. My concern is that if the estate division is counted against the minor subdivision limit, it leaves the property more restrictive position than the ordinance seems to contemplate. And then Exhibit A, it shows the original 111 acres from 1942. That's when our client, Mrs. Lund's grandmother on the property, in 1977, following her grandmother's passing, the property was transferred to Mrs. Lund's mother through the Superior Court of Hancock County. Exhibit B shows the original minor, there was one minor subdivision done in 1986, the Lund Minor Subdivision. Again, it was taken from the overall 111 acres. And if I'm going too fast, please slow me down. Exhibit C shows additional minor subdivisions that were done 2002, 2004, 2006. Again, they were divided from the overall parcel, 111-acre parcel. And then in Exhibit D, there were six parcels created from the remaining farm as part of estate planning for Mrs. Lund's mother. A recorded survey was completed in 2020, and it formed the basis for these divisions. Following Mrs. Stevens' passing in 2024, then the parcels were distributed per her will. Parcels four and five to Mrs. Lund, parcels one, two, and three to her sister, Mrs. Anderson, and then parcel six to her other sister, Mrs. Gabel. And really, the only parcel that I'm concerned with this evening is parcel four, because that's the one Mrs. Lund is trying to subdivide. Exhibit E presents the proposed three-lot subdivision being created from parcel four. And then Exhibit F is just kind of a detailed view, showing the acreages, and that these are larger lots, and in comparison to what's in the area. These exhibits collectively demonstrate the historical progression and the current proposal related to the Lund family property from 1942 to the estate divisions and this proposed subdivision. Because the 2020 action created a new parcel, I believe it's reasonable to view it as its own tract for subdivision purposes. From that perspective, the current parcel has not yet been divided under 10 acres, and should therefore remain eligible for the small-scale flexibility that the minor subdivision process was designed to allow. I fully recognize and support the county's goal of ensuring orderly and consistent growth, and I wish to align with those objectives. At the same time, it appears equitable that the estate-related divisions, which did not involve in development, should not permanently foreclose a property's future ability to make use of the minor subdivision option. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can about this property and what we're trying to do.
It'd be my first two. How many divisions are you saying have happened?
Overall, on the, the ori-
Just, what's your, you said it was zero in your, in your opinion?
I look at it as parcel four was created as part of the estate, and it should be looked as an original parcel. It never existed until now. It's never had anything taken out of it.
How many non-exempt subdivisions have occurred since 1942 in your interpretation, then?
For this parcel?
For, yeah, for the full?
Done, because, I mean, they've all been done through the minor subdivision process.
Through minor subdivision or from estates?
Well, yeah. So, in 2020, the six parcels were done through the estate, yes.
There were two estate actions that you're saying? I'm just trying to track your estate actions.
Just one.
Just one, okay.
Yes.
It's a brilliant way to try to get away around the rule. So, I mean, good attorney there, trying to get around the rule, but why not just do a major subdivision, knowing that we'll probably pass it? Why not, why not just do that and not worry about all this?
The major subdivision, we would have to rezone it, because it's agricultural. The biggest thing there is, I, I think this is more in line with the area. I mean, major subdivision, it gets rezoned. These three lots could turn into more lots. I think, I mean, you could do as many as zoning would allow. And I don't think that's in the spirit of what Mrs. Lund is trying to do. It's not in the spirit of the area. Now, this is the future, this is future Fortville. This, we're about a mile west, or east of Fortville. I don't, I think there would be pretty good remonstrance if there was gonna be a major subdivision done near all these larger estate-type lots. It's not a high-dense area.
I guess, to Scott's point, if you did a major subdivision, you could go ahead and subdivide some additional things. You could, you could plat this, and you could deal with your, your issue on Lot Three of frontage. At the same time, you could deal with the remaining parcel, the previous parcel three, right, as well. I guess what I was getting at is the, the purpose, I think, of the reason why we were working harder on minor and major subdivisions was to help to create, not that this is a bad layout, but help to create better residential layouts than just rows of lots with driveways along the county road. And so, I think that that's probably where Kayla's mind was, if I had to guess, was trying to create a more cohesive development in some way, not just the difference between minor, major subdivision, more or less, like, like that. But I was trying to determine what, which of these exhibits existed. I was having a hard time with this. Would it be, is it Exhibit B that existed on January 1st, 2002? Is that, or is it C?
Correct, yeah. Nothing would have been done until after that.
Got it. Okay, so there was actually then one, two, six.
Could we get a read about the exempt division for estate purposes? Is that for historical or current? You know what I mean? Because there's a cumulative nature to that, so we can't, we can't cumulatively count estate subdivisions in the total today, or let's say this needed to happen, one, two, three, for an estate, does it only preclude that?
Only one exemption for estates. Tell me, Kayla, you probably have that language for plating.
So, divisions made for estate purposes are exempt from the plating provision of the subdivision control ordinance.
Plating only. So, the way we're viewing it legally is that there was the 60-acre original parcel, and we kind of had some debate about what date we were going back to start looking. So, Kayla's been using the date of 2002, and then we could even go back to 1993. But for purposes, we're using 2002, which doesn't change the story at all. So, assuming that there was, you, you get two splits and then a remainder. That's what our statute, or what our local law says. So, the first split was in 2002, was a .91 acre split for Abbey Anderson, and then in 2004, there was another two-acre split for Robinson. So, there's your two splits, and then the remainder was the 57. So, we feel like they've got their two splits and a remainder, regardless of the estate, which is only exempt for plating purposes. That's kind of where we came down.
Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Cooper? He's doing some research. You gotta develop a question there in a minute? Nope, okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody that wants to speak, I guess, in opposition to the petition for appeal? None? All right. That would give you, I guess, Mr. Cooper, I guess, a couple minutes of rebuttal if you have anything else you want to say? No, you're good, okay. Any further discussion? What we're looking for, I think, here is, like Kayla stated, it would be a decision to grant the appeal, deny the appeal, or we can spend another 90 days on reviewing the appeal.
It could be a motion to uphold the staff's decision.
Okay.
Motion to uphold the staff's decision.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second to uphold the staff's decision on the plat, on the minor subdivision of three, three acres. Dawn, when you're ready, have the roll call, please. And I assume you've, you've got, you saw Mr. Waldridge come in, right? He can, okay. He voted before. You voted before, okay.
Ms. Willer?
Yes.
Mr. Fout?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Yes.
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 Okay. All right, thank you. That brings us to item number four of our agenda. All right, thank you. Brings us to item number four of our agenda this evening, amendment of chapter 156 of the Code of Ordinance, proposed amendments. Power generation facility as permitted as a permitted use with special exception.
Before you start, one of what looks to be a submittal for agenda item number four was in my agenda item number two packet, so just in case you're looking for it.
I noticed that, yeah.
There, okay. Look at all the, all the, all the, all the friends already. Everyone got it.
Oh, there's a second, you have another one in there, too.
Oh.
You have two now. You can read it twice.
I will.
Quickly summarize, you guys, with what this particular ordinance changed about. The Chesco Energy, or the natural gas turbine facility, that was kind of, has been tossed around for Blue River Township, is what brought this item to the Board of Commissioners' attention and also the residents of Blue River Township, that a special exception use in the agricultural district does include a commercial power generation facility. After review with the concern group of residents in Blue River Township, many of whom provided letters that were included in your packet, it was, a resolution was passed by the Board of Commissioners recommending that the special exception for commercial power generation facility be removed from the agricultural zoning district. So where it currently says an S in the agricultural column for commercial power generation facility, we are removing it, and it'll just be blank, meaning that commercial power generation facility is no longer a permitted or special exception use in the agricultural zoning district. It would still be a special exception or permitted use in the industrial zoning districts.
All, all the industrial, just a certain one?
I would have to look, but I'm, I would have to double-check that. Do you want me to pull it up real quick, so we can look at that?
May just, the only, the only reason you ask is, I mean, how easy would it be if they wanted to rezone that area to industrial? And then which, which one would they have to do? Would they have to do the heaviest industrial? Would they, could they do the IB? That's, that's really the question.
Okay. Let's pull that up. There we go. All right, it is a special except, currently, it is listed as a special exception in the ag district. That's what we're trying to remove altogether. And it is a special exception use in IL and IG. So it would need to be reason, a parcel where this is desired use would need to be rezoned to IL or IG, and then it would require a trip to the BZA for a special exception. So what we're doing here tonight would mean that in order for a power generation facility to occur in the agricultural zoning district, it wouldn't just require now a trip to the BZA, which is today what it would require, just, I would, which seemed to the residents of that area scarily close, I think, to approval. So that is why it is being, the request is to remove it altogether from the agricultural zoning district as even a special exception use.
Is the new U D, is the UDO we're working on, is that how it is, that's been proposed? I can't remember that either.
I don't believe so.
I guess I'm curious, like, the why? Why now? Be one, and then this has been on the books forever. I mean, this isn't just something that was recently done. I mean, the power generation facility, I mean, it's been a part of this section for how long? And it's never been an issue up till now?
Yeah, I, I think, I'll let her work on getting where she is. My, my thought on it, and I may change my mind listening to more of this, but it's kind of like when we started to, started to dig into solar and we started to understand utility scale. I think that these facilities are much larger and more intrusive than they probably were when the zoning ordinance was drafted. I think power generation facility was probably substations, things like that. I don't know that it was these large 100, 150, 200-acre facilities that are kind of intrusive to the community. So I think that that's what we're probably recognizing here and trying to, to make sure that it goes. Not that it can't be done, it's just that it can, it gets more oversight from our elected officials, I think, or gets more opportunity to be studied and by the public and noticed and all that stuff, so.
What kind of zoning would a data center have to have?
Industrial, let me pull that up, though, too, I can show you. All right, so a data center, a modern-day data center would be referred to in our ordinance as a communications service exchange. That is a special exception in CC, CR, which are commercial districts. It is permitted in institutional, industrial business park, industrial light, and industrial general. So not a special exception or permitted in ag.
Can you define a power generation facility? What is that definition?
Rhonda, do, do we currently have any power generation facility commercial that we could visually understand now that in our county?
I don't think we have anything that's kind, in our county that's as big as what this one, what they're talking about.
Would equate to that? Do we have anything like that now?
Not that I know of.
I think they only have one up in New Carleal, Indiana. So a power generation facility is defined as a facility that produces usable electricity by harnessing any array of resources, including fossil fuels, water, wind, and solar sources.
Thank you.
So it's only electricity, digesters are not included? That, different, we don't even, we don't probably even deal with those right now?
That's a good point.
Yes, I think those are two issues, the electricity part. Is it utility that is product, produced, yeah?
Could you repeat what she said?
Power generation facility is a facility that produces usable electricity by harnessing any array of resources, including fossil fuels, water, wind, and solar sources.
Yeah, what'd she say?
There was some discussion about digesters and whether natural gas digesters counted as power generation facilities. And because natural gas digesters produce gas, not electricity, according to this definition, they wouldn't fall under power generation facility.
They wouldn't fall anywhere.
Yeah, that's why my question is, what is that definition? Because if we're going to eliminate this, is it really affecting what was being proposed? That was the reason for my question, so.
Okay, yes, the, the Chesco petition had proposed a natural gas turbine power plant, which would utilize natural gas to produce electricity, which would then go on the power lines that cross this site along with a very large gas line.
So they are using natural gas to get electricity, so it does affect it? That's, that answers that question, so thank you.
I was wondering, and not to make it even more complicated, but the definition of power generation facility, it's, are we, with these scale of facilities that are coming online now, should we have possibly two different definitions instead of one, where we're dealing with the large scale and small scale? Now, we'd have to go figure out how to define those, but I kind of felt like the, a power generation facility, like I mentioned earlier, was a, was a smaller type thing. It wasn't of these massive scales, and so it's kind of two different things. I think that the old, the old defin, this definition and what we might have seen in the early 2000s is probably much less intrusive than what something like this will be. So would that be something worth considering as another definition?
Yes, I think scale definitely could come into account. Substation, utility substations are separate use that are looked at differently in our use matrix. However, one thing that we've become aware of is that utility substations are largely exempt from local zoning laws altogether. So when you see an electric substation go up in an area, I believe there's a couple next to each other on 700, no, 500 North and 700 West in that neighborhood, up by McCordsville, those did not come through our planning and building department for any sort of permitting or review of landscaping or anything like that. They are exempt because they're considered a local utility and necessary for the public good.
Distribution would be different than generation?
Yes.
You're looking at it as a distribution mechanism, okay.
Yeah, and this, I think the, the definition is commercial, I think, is also important.
Yeah, for commercial purposes. Why are we, why are we hearing about spot rezoning in the remonstrance?
That's what I was wondering, too.
Oh, not all remonstrators are. It's not simple, this stuff's not simple. It's complicated. I think, I think they're looking at, like, if you change it, then it would become a spot rezone. In some areas, where it's just ag, and then they want to put industrial in one spot, would be a spot rezone then. That's what they're thinking about.
I think the thinking was that the use, especially in Blue River Township, is extremely rural lifestyle, residential and agricultural. It's beautiful area, and as Commissioner Spalding has said, we've been directing residents from further west in the county to move that direction if they want to avoid development. So allowing something like this, even as a special exception, would amount to a spot rezone. I believe that was the intent.
All right, any more questions for Kayla? So another interesting procedural thing here. So you were representing a request by the commissioners, I believe, right? So we would be to, anybody want to be in opposition to this proposed ordinance change? So is there anybody in opposition to this proposal? All right, we've got somebody shifting around.
Do you swear or affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your last name.
Jonathan Lawler, L-A-W-L-E-R. I appreciate the comprehensive plan to protect agriculture, but at the same time, I, I've had the privilege of traveling in the country, doing ag advocacy as well as rural advocacy, and cybersecurity, as well as our electric grid, is we're in a crisis. And I think just putting something in, number one, as a farmer, telling me that it's kind of the private property rights thing, and that's why Farm Bureau on issues like this tend to be neutral, save farmland, private property. I, I get that. But when it comes to saving farmland, my grandfather did 48 bushels an acre in corn. That would be a insurance claim today. It really would be. We're producing enough that if we can carve out certain areas for economic development, even in our rural areas, it, it makes sense, and I just would not like to see this changed, not, not today. So, yeah, I, I appreciate Scott talking about the spot, the spot rezoning. I'm still trying, I, I still don't really understand that why it's going to cover the entire county, so, yeah. And that's all I have, thank you.
She got a question for you.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So are, are you a resident? Are you, or?
Yeah, I, and I apologize. I'm also diabetic, so my blood sugar's really low right now. I, I speak in front of a lot of people usually, so. I am a resident, I have a neighborhood next to me, and I'll just be brutally honest, I take a toxic waste dump over having a residential neighborhood next to my farm. I've had thousands of dollars worth of damage done to my crops. I have trespassers constantly. I would take a power generation plant next to me any day of the week. My rural neighbors are great, the neighborhoods, not so much. So, and I can tell you, sorry, I'm starting to relax. I, I have been inside meetings, some cybersecurity meetings, and when we bring up data centers, and they're the main cause of this, that's not the case. Farm Bureau Ohio just released, when, there's media out there saying that data centers are, are causing the utility rates to go up. Well, what they don't tell you is, of the 23 generation plants that were there, they've shut down all but three due to EPA regulations. We don't have, we don't currently have the infrastructure in this country to maintain what we have, let alone start competing with China. It's just, it scares me when I go into these cybersecurity, food security events, where, you know, because I'm considered a member of the media, I'm not allowed to go into, like, the FBI meetings, but just hearing that our hog barns, our chicken barns, they're all controlled through data centers now. They're, they're controlled through, it's all out there in cyber, and the electric, the electrical grids are, that's what's necessary. I think if Hancock County is able to allow something like this, you know, not particularly at that spot, but any place where we might have an opportunity to, to put power generation in, I feel like everybody needs to be on deck. It's scary to me seeing the constant push against where we need to be technologically, and we're not, we're not going there. We're, I hate to say this, we're sitting there going, well, I don't want that in my backyard. I agree, I mean, that's, that's, I, I feel for those people. And I also, when people say, well, it's an ag community, and they don't want this, well, what happens when, one of my fellow farmers wants to put up a hog barn, and the same people that are against this say, now, put that in the ordinance? Make it to where you can't build hog barns? Because the environmental groups that are against these things, against the natural gas generation, that are against data centers, they're also against what they call factory farming. Where we, as Americans, we call it feeding the world. But that, that's, that's also the problem. So I just employer, employ you to make sure that, that you weigh all the, all the possibilities, especially looking nationally how Hancock County might have a chance to help our aging infrastructure versus being one of the places that says no. infrastructure versus being one of the places that says no. Especially with Governor Braun, and I wasn't sure when she read that, is nuclear part of a power generation, like a power generation plant? So Governor Braun has really pushed those, and he's pushing them as an economic development tool. And that is the future for us to, to get clean, reliable energy. And I would hate for something like this to keep or make it difficult for another, for, for an opportunity like that to come to Hancock County. Again, I appreciate people wanting to save farmland. I will always appreciate those people. It's just, as a farmer, I don't think enough of us farmers are asked this question. Not enough of us, we don't, we don't, we don't get a way into it, and they don't think about, sometimes there's no legacy to, to take us on. So, again, I apologize. I promise I'm not usually this shaky, but I, my blood sugar is dropping, so I want to go sit down. Thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks for your time. Anybody else like to, to speak in opposition? Come on up. Or, I'm sorry, well, yeah, so it would be, I guess, in opposition of the removal. So, yeah, I don't think we're there yet, so. All right, so nobody else wants to speak on that, so do you guys want to take any? Okay, all right. Opposition to the change, right?
Not necessarily.
We're in our opposition period.
I'm gonna, I'll tell you why it's opposition.
You're affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Steve Elsbury, E-L-S-B-U-R-Y, an attorney, sheep producer, I think this is the punk rock farmer, is that right?
Yep.
Look him up on social media, he's a pretty cool follow. So, not in opposition, I'll just say, you see the room is empty, even the, the folks that are in support of this, we're in harvest season. Kayla, I don't know if Kyle's still in the fields right now, but you're not going to get farmers here in the, in the end of October, so, that's it.
All right.
I was trying to say a continuance would be better, I guess.
Yeah.
I'm trying to interpret what he said there.
So, this is a question for Yuranda in this drafting. This doesn't eliminate power generation projects coming forward? So basically, it's just taking it out of, out of the current ordinance and creating a different process for people to move, to bring a project forward?
It's taking the, the S out of our land use chart, where it used to be a special exception for a power generation plant to go through the BZA process for approval, and then it would have to be rezoned. So it's a more, it's, it's a more arduous process where there's more chance, there's more opportunities for hearing because it would require a rezone. So more public input and more vetting is involved in a rezone versus.
I, I would maybe phrase that a little bit differently. Perhaps it aligns the discussion about where we harness to other changes we've made very recently, the procedural alignment. Or procedurally, we said that solar, certain types of solar need to go through a certain process. This is very similar to that. And so it just, we have a, we, we are, we are mistreating two different items, and it's just an opportunity for us to say, here's procedurally how we handle large utility questions. The only thing we haven't done, which you were talking about, Mike, is we haven't said this micro range, that, that's where we haven't done. And I don't know that this is the opportunity to do that. Perhaps I'd say, that's why I brought up digestors, and are we, is it just electricity drivers? We should properly deal with this in the UDO, all utility-like activities, and there should, we shouldn't be giving a differential procedural treatment, depending upon which, where this falls or doesn't fall definitionally. That, that's what I think we are at risk of not having the, a, a consistent procedural handling.
All right, we did do a lot of comparisons with wind and solar, because it's what we've done recently to change those, so it made sense to change this one, too. It's kind of the logic.
The only question I had procedurally, and you might be done, we've got a fourth whereas with the commissioners' adoption of a resolution. Is that a, is that just a step? What was the decision to have that included?
Right, so in the Indiana Code, there's two pathways to how a rezone can happen, and one is the, a petitioner can bring it, that's how we most of the time see it.
Got it, thank you.
Well, I guess I'll say there's three ways. Or the Plan Commission can bring a change, or the commissioners can. And so in this case, the commissioners are asking you to make this change.
So important in order to note that in the whereas for our, our, thank you, thank you.
So to follow up with Lacy, when you're talking about the procedure piece, so here's the what if to me. So, I don't have an issue about, I think the procedure piece is, is a good process, so, but does it open up for everyone to come forward that knows that we're going to change that process, to put in an application for a potential power generation facility? Does that open up us, in a liability perspective, but I'm just saying, where people are rushing to the table, you know, we're going through solar, we had several people that were wanting to get in under the old guidelines versus they knew we were working on the new guidelines. I guess I'm just wondering about how we might, you know, I don't know, would I say hiatus? Why we're working on this language? Does that make, I don't, articulating like attorneys, but how we might be able to protect maybe potential projects coming forward?
I think what you're, is there anything pending in front of the BZA that would?
No, and I think that's kind of why.
Yeah, understood.
Kind of, that's fine.
So there's no requirement at this time for a moratorium if we're able to take action, but perhaps there might be, I don't know if we would be able to put one in place, though, that would need to come from a higher court than ours.
We had, we probably have a couple, apparently we have a couple of people want to speak in favor of this. Is that where you're at, Larry? You guys okay to hear another testimony this evening? You got a couple of minutes?
Sure.
All right, come on up, we'll give you two minutes.
You swear or affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Larry Sedam, S-E-D-A-M. It doesn't limit putting power facilities in Hancock County. This only eliminates putting it in ag. According to that chart, there was four other places you could still put power generating facilities. So I don't think we're limiting our options in Hancock County. We are narrowing down who we affect as our neighbors. You know I preach and preach and preach about our neighbors. Let's keep it out of certain areas. We've already ruined enough of our county with industrial. We got plenty of options to put a generating plant, if that's what we want, in Hancock County, in industrial or commercial. But I think it's going to open up a bigger hornet's nest when you start putting this in industrial area closer to people, but this still gives you an opportunity to put it in Hancock County, if that's what the county wants. Keep it out of our ag district, keep it out of where we have strived to keep ag as ag. Okay? That's all I ask. Let's, let's, again, I agree with him. Put a power plant in if that's what the county wants, but put it in an area where you've already agreed to make it industrial, or whatever we deem it. I'm not telling you to limit it, but keep it out of ag.
All right, so I've got to ask you a question on this.
I don't, well, can I, I wouldn't want this, my neighbor is an ag, I wouldn't want this in my neighborhood.
So, obviously, this is a pipeline.
Yes.
That they're going to use. Pipeline only goes through the eastern part of the county, it's not going to go down the western, where it's all a zone industrial. So you saying we should say, okay, no to the ag, but then they could come in, do a spot rezone, and make it industrial, and that's fine?
Can you, can they not put a pipeline? You got all the, where's all the gas and everything coming in from Marion County that feeds the western side of the county? Where's all that gas coming from? There's, there's, there's gas available, is there not?
They get the industri, this is, this is massive industrial pipeline here.
Well.
You've got to be on one of the transport lines to do this.
The transport, yeah.
There's tramp, there's transport lines, there's transport lines that run, and look by the airport, there's those transport lines that run off, and just, just, just on the east of, yeah, the east of me, there's some power lines, there's several power lines.
Talking about the gas.
Oh, the gas lines, yeah.
They're more restricted, and they're, they've got to be the bigger.
Yeah, I, I get it.
So I'm trying to ask you, we eliminate the ag, but then we do a spot rezone right there, or somewhere on that pipeline, is that what you're trying to say? Is that we should do a spot re?
Oh, no, no, I mean, I, I don't want it in ag. I, I agree with what we're doing here. I, I support this, I mean, it's one of the very few things where.
Just as long as it's not an ag. It could be anywhere else but ag, is what you're saying.
Well, it's, it's, except for industrial, it can be an industrial or commercial, which is where you're saying it can, can be.
Industrial, not commercial.
No, you have two Cs there, didn't you?
No, that was for data center.
Oh, it's that data center, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm sorry, yes. Okay. I just.
Okay. Any more questions for Larry? All right, thanks, Larry.
Sorry, thanks.
I'm starting to wonder if maybe we, kind of a radical idea, but do we need a power generation corridor in our future land use map? Because, I mean, it's, it's, it's an asset to the community, right? It's a whole, it's, we've got a thing that we need to deal with here, but.
I do have a comment, though, and I've, you mentioned earlier that I was here many years ago, and this is back before a lot of the rules and things that we currently have, back before we actually became a board like this. So we had to transition quite a bit in that time period, and it was a very, a big learning process, and some of the rules have been modified over the years since then. So, I mean, we're talking 25 years ago when all this started with Hancock County. We had a small planning commission, but it was very basic. But with that, and the community looked a lot different than it does today when I sit here and I listen to that, and I see a lot of what a farmer or anybody else has on their property, and if I'm raising corn, nobody complains about the corn or the soybeans, but as soon as I want to raise something alternative, now that causes a lot of questions. But me as a farmer, I should be able to raise on my field whatever I need to raise to make an income, because my farming is my income. Now, with that being said, I realize that there needs to be some control as to what happens on that property, because it could affect some of the neighboring pieces. And if there is a opportunity for a farmer to be able to make his income farming corn or farming natural gas, he should be able to farm whichever one is possible. Now, I don't think that opening that ground up and digging out all the minerals or anything like that would be conducive to what we're trying to do as a farmer, per se. So there needs to be some guidelines. I believe that with that, there should be a, some limitations to, to this, and we make it a little, not necessarily difficult, but there needs to be some oversight to some of those, those items. So with that, I guess I'm in, I, I will move that we have a proposed amendment that we use this, that we remove it from the agriculture, that, that does happen. There is an opportunity to go ahead and put these in, and that would be the best place for it, and I would think that we would be in favor of that if that did come about and we said we had to have that. It just makes it so that we could zone it there because there is a specific area. So I will make that motion to have the amendment for the land use to remove that as a, from the agriculture area.
Can we clarify exactly what we're motioning with counsel first, before we take a motion? Because I, I think there's in front of us some ordinance and language that taking dual action might not be best, in the best interest. Maybe we should ask counsel what the motion should be?
Favorable, unfavorable, or no recommendation to go to the?
For this document?
It is the ordinance that doesn't have a number right now, an ordinance amending Title 15, Chapter 156. Is this just, whenever we amend the zoning code, it's what we're doing tonight? It's just a recommendation to the commissioners? No recommendation, a favorable recommendation, or unfavorable?
And my motion is to favorable recommendation to remove.
In the form of this, this drafted ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right. And I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to offer a favorable recommendation to the commissioners to remove power generation facility, commercial, has a permitted use with special exception. Do we have any discussion on that? I'll just make, make a comment as well. I, I, I agree, we've got an opportunity. The gentleman who was speaking made very good points. We do have a good opportunity here to, to be a leader in this, but I also do like the, the additional oversight that this would give us with the rezone and passing these things through the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, as opposed to a special exception that slides over to the BZA, and that was the issue we had with, with solar, is that these big projects were kind of missing our elected officials, I think, and this kind of protects that, so.
Also a very binary process, which doesn't allow for, just like this. So appropriate handling of BZA, we're not ideating, and here we might have better opportunity to ideate.
Yeah, I agree, so.
I, I would have preferred, my preference would be a continuance, but since, hopefully the farmers, since they can't be here today, they'll, they'll go and talk to the commissioners then and let them know whether they like it or not.
Yeah, that's a good point. Hopefully, the agriculture community that wasn't aware or was unable to attend will be able to catch the ear of their commissioner prior to that vote, so.
One more note, there probably should be some careful handling of the definition of power generation facility in our UDO, adoption of this, looking at the corridor, and then making sure we're looking at the full array of, of what we're harnessing and distributing.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, then we'll call the roll for the favorable recommendation.
Excuse me, yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. I believe that concludes our hearing items this evening. Move us into other business. Lot of other business. The election of officers, we are still missing a vice president, and I think we decided that we would just defer on both boards to January, and should we have a need, we can appoint prior to the beginning of the meetings for those. So that probably satisfies other business number one, so. Yeah, so we'll do, yeah, I guess, so we'll, let's plan on elections in January for both the Planning Commission and the BZA, and make sure that they're on the agenda and noticed for January. All right, so then item number two, the UDO update and transition plan discussion.
Not a whole lot to add on this. I have, I believe at the last meeting, I told you there was an executive session that was coming up for discussion of this, and one thing that came out of that was a wish of the commissioners to look into adopting kind of a, the structure of a UDO, but with the old content as one sort of way of moving forward with this slowly and over time. In the meantime, I do have a final draft of our UDO available to the Plan Commission, if you'd like to look at it. And I am working with. And I am working with, to see what additional scope would be necessary to have sort of that intermediate, sorry, interim or transitional UDO put in place. So that's where that's at.
Yeah, so I, I sent you all an email, and I think that sort of where everybody's minds were on that was if they could see the same requirements in the new format, they could adopt that. The commissioners could adopt that. And then changes could then be dealt with, not, maybe not necessarily on a one-to-one basis, but maybe a chapter-by-chapter basis or something, and through the standard public process, essentially. So then they felt like they had more transparency, and they could see, it gave the public more opportunity to see what was coming at them and digest it in chunks, as opposed to just one giant document getting approved all in one, one vote, so.
Didn't we also additionally say that different groups that were impacted, like developers, agriculture, they could have a, have a, have a separate meeting to address those changes? That that was a part of the conversation?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be, I guess that'll have to be, that would be outlined in the transition plan to pick which chunks would be approved, and like what changes would be approved together, I guess. So would it be based on focus group or whatever? So we'll just have to have those discussions, I think, so. All right, quality of place plan discussion.
We have one quick item to report on this. The Mary Gibble and Randy Sorrell, so that's the Economic Development and the Community Foundation, brought the Quality of Place Plan to the Board of Commissioners on, I believe, October 20th. And the Board of Commissioners passed a proclamation proclaiming that the Quality of Place Plan was a great plan for the county, and that they really appreciated it being put in place. And that was all the further action that was necessary. So there is a proclamation, and it's done. No action needed by this board. Shirley interlocal is ongoing. We, Rhonda and I spoke with Teresa Hester, town clerk, and their counsel about move, how to move forward with that interlocal. And Rhonda wrote a very nice email about who needed to do what. And I know that Teresa has been in touch with American Legal about how certain things got into Shirley's town code and the best way to move forward with editing that a little bit, to make it very, very clear how Shirley's town government is, basically, anything that is in the town limits of Shirley, the wish is, per this interlocal we're working on, that it be governed by the Hancock County Plan Commission and Hancock County Plan Commission's zoning ordinance and subdivision control ordinance, even the part that's in Henry County. And so there's some going, going back and forth about how to best word that so that Henry County understands what's happening to and is on the same page. I don't think that's gonna be- Any questions on that?
So when does that, when, when do we see that again?
Hopefully next month.
Okay.
Or at least we'll have an update on it next month.
Before we jump to trail plan, back to Quality of Place Plan, there, there actually is, there's no official action, I guess, but that Quality of Place Plan, I would encourage you to give it a read. I mean, it's a pretty decent-sized document, but there's some interesting things there that were generated by professional planners. And so it's a good guiding document. I mean, it's like when things come up, I mean, I, I made the comment, I don't know how well it was received, but I made the comment that I look at documents like that, and like those corridor documents that we have from Urban Land Institute, as testimony, in a way, you know? When you're looking for guidance on a petition, you know, that I think that documents like that are very good reference material for us when we're trying to make decisions on things like, say, power generation facilities and things like that, and trail plans. So with that, we can move on to the trails plan.
So this is more or less to introduce the trail plan update as an option, as something we need to pursue at a future meeting, meeting next month, and to get some direction on how to pursue this. So the trail plan that was passed in 2018, oh, and Mike, totally agree. And we're already, we're already doing the Quality of Place Plan, like before it even was totally adopted, or not adopted, but proclaimed. It was, it's been, it's already happening. So we're, we're really excited as a county and as a community to see quality of place be, be put in, in the, in the spotlight, and that quality of life, or quality of place activities and projects are being given some, some credit for part, being part of economic development, because they really are. Okay. The trail plan update, speaking of quality of, of place items, there is a, a road in eastern Hancock County, 1050 East, that is shown on our final trail map as part of the trail plan. And it is not a great road to have the trail be kind of a share-o situation with cars. It is, the school, the school eastern uses that same road. Charlottesville's on it. It's really a main thoroughfare between Charlottesville and US 40 and Wilkinson, which seems like a great thoroughfare, but when you're on a bicycle, not so much. So the, the trail plan update will be to simply shift the, the map so that that one road is shown on, I believe, oh goodness, I'm gonna mess it up, I'll just show you the map next month, but shifted just a little bit further to the west, so that it is on not such a thoroughfare. And the reason that this is the time to do that, because of course, any cyclist would probably be able to tell you, yeah, I use that road, not that road, it's much less busy, is because we have a great new trail, trail signage program. And in order to get the signage on this other road, we need the map to show that this is the route our trail plan takes.
Because, because I mean, I think originally the thought was that that road would be expanded, widened, and then put like the, which no- bikelated there, where people could use it, because it is such a thoroughfare, probably the original intent.
The original trails plan was more than a proclamation, I think, right?
Oh, yes.
So what was the administrative handling of changes to that? Your office can make those?
It's in the cover of the trails plan in my office. I will have to, I'll have to pull that out. I really haven't had a lot of time to work on this this month. But I did want to just mention it to this, that we're going to be seeing next month. And if there is any action I need to take first, before we introduce anything more formal here, please let me know. And Rhonda, I'll be talking to you about the right way to get this started over the next month as well. So that's, that's the over, that's the gist of it.
These, these last two items are administrative, but before that, I was, sorry to be jumping around, but back to the power generation stuff, do you guys feel like it's, would be a good use of the staff's time to do a little research on power generation facilities and what different types there are, and what types of definitions might happen to that? Just maybe spend a little time on some research and report back to the Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners, as to some recommendations on definitions, kind of like what we did with solar, utility scale, microscale, those types of things. Maybe a quick memo of just professional advice, I guess. So let's look to do that in the next month or so, to help the commissioners before they take action on that. 2026 meeting calendar is very colorful. Makes it easier to read than previous years.
We had one conflict with tech, but we can work that out with the tech committee on how we need to deal with. Did we figure it out? Oh, okay. Planning Commission, look. All of you all right with?
Yeah.
Every year, it seems like you always pick spring break week for the kids.
Spring break week would be, what, that last week of March?
Probably.
Is it this upcoming year that all four schools will have the same calendar?
Probably.
I think it is.
Yeah.
So like-
I guess we don't have a quorum, then you don't have a meeting.
Yeah, you don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
Those weird things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need any formal approval of this, or are we just good? Everybody's good? No complaints? No comment? Okay.
We will be taking this to the Board of Commissioners. That's the next step.
Okay. I assume we'll see it at the BZA as well, so. All right, expiring appointments. Dean and I have expired.
You're expiring. And, let's see. Of course, our elected officials need to choose if they'll be sending the same appointments here or if they need to change things up as well. Your sheet showing the expiring board members, so, yeah, Gary and Scott are the one-year elected official appointees to the board. And then Mike and Dean, your terms are, your initial terms are expiring as of December 31st. So please let your appointing bodies know if you are still interested in serving, or if you need a break, so.
We would have the big party if you left, Mike. Been doing it for so long.
You guys would like it when you put the BZA in the lurch, though, probably, because you've got two more years there.
For the, the, for Mike, that's the Board of Commissioners is the appointing body. And for Dean, that's the county surveyor.
He's out there.
Yep.
He's watching to change his mind right now. He's watching how you vote and say, yeah.
Also, we've got the Platte Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Plan Commission. Those are one-year terms. And I, I need to reach out to them. They have had a couple months off. But to see if they are, are interested in serving for another year, or if we need to look for new membership there.
Who is Byron Holden? Has he ever done anything on the Platte Committee before?
I think that's ours. That's our pick.
Oh, that's our guy, okay.
That's who we have to pick.
Let's see. Board of Zoning Appeals, Lacey is the appointee from the Plan Commission.
Oh, yeah.
An appointee from the Plan Commission, appointed by the Board of Commissioners. And her term will expire on January 5th. So that's another one that, please let them know.
This, this round will get us onto our new, everybody will be into full terms now based on our reorganization two years ago, right? So this, this one should put us right, everybody will be in full terms then, as opposed to all those partials that we had, because we had a few partials or something. But I think I was a partial, maybe, okay.
Getting closer, anyway.
Yeah, okay. All right, any closing comments?
One other quick thing to keep in mind for next year is, this is the time of year also to think about, is 6:30 a good time still, that kind of thing? Now's the time where we can adjust that stuff, so.
I mean, it's- Want to make a change?
This year hasn't been too bad, but I mean, if you get, if you start getting those, well, you're here till, of course, I've not been here for that, but it better not happen midnight.
Disaster midnight.
At one time.
We've, we've had them. I was trying to figure out how to stall to get us to nine o'clock tonight. I hate for, I hate for you guys to have to leave early, so.
County, county gets its money's worth.
Yeah, yeah, they do. Well, give that some thought. We can talk about it again next, next week, I guess, on the time, and see if that's good with, would that affect anything on the administration of the room and the technology that never works and all those things, or?
No, half an hour earlier on the same-
No big deal, okay. All right, I guess we can entertain a motion to hang it up. All those in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries.